I will now call the August 4th, 2010 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. In a moment, we'll stand, observe a moment of silence, and then we're going to have Joey Carter from Troop 310 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Joey, if you want to start making your way down. There is one adjustment to the agenda. Items four and five will be rescheduled for the September 7th meeting. That's the presentation by the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, Phase 2 improvements, and also the resolution adopting it. Items four and five, September 7th. We're going to stand, observe a moment of silence, and then Joey, I want you to turn this way, because we're going to look at the flag, and then I will tell you when to go.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joey. We want to welcome those on attendance tonight, and those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council Meeting. Next, we have a consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Lowry.
Aye.
Councilwoman Foulard.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Gorman.
Aye.
carried unanimously.
Item 4 and 5, as indicated, has been pulled and rescheduled for September 7th. Next, we have a public hearing on a 2010-2011 CDVG Annual Action Plan.
Your Honor, for this particular public hearing, I'd like to offer one exhibit, which includes a city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, 2010-2011 Annual Action Plan, and, after David, a publication that's advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, July 31, 2010. These are all the exhibits I have to offer.
Okay, Ms. Allen.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Before you this evening is the final step in moving forward with the 2010-2011 CDVG Annual Action Plan. This is formerly a public hearing, and certainly open for any comments from the public as such. As you may recall, the last time this was before you was at the June 21st City Council Meeting. At that time, with number of discussion items and direction from the council, staff moved forward with publishing the notice, the 30-day notice wherein the draft annual action plans before you this evening was put up for a public review and comment and discussion for the past 30 days, or 30 days beginning June 21st. So we've now passed those days, and now this is the final public hearing before moving ahead with requesting your motion to adopt that annual action plan through the attached resolution. As noted, there are seven separate projects or programs that have been identified for funding allocation for this upcoming year. The total funding allocated to the city of Blue Springs this coming year is $248,345. I'm showing a map up here of those infrastructure improvements that are identified. Number one is the Baumgartner Park connection to Ashton, kind of in the center north there, connection from Ashton into the Baumgartner Park itself. Again, essentially a sidewalk connection that is. Main Street intersections, similar to what you see at 11th and 12th Streets, would happen at both 8th and 9th. 10th Street is already programmed through an amendment that was done by the council back in January. So that would add to that, to the east along Main Street. As you see there, Vesper Street sidewalks from 10th Street to 7th Highway are included. We have about a $91,000 estimate for that. Minor Home Repair Program, again, not showing on the map there, but these are the programs. Number five, the Minor Home Repair Program, identified $15,000. That's added to the carryover of approximately $60,000 that we're anticipating from this year. So still allocating approximately $75,000 in the next fiscal year. We have also CBG Administration Funds. This was part of the amendment that was done in January, now carrying over to this year, and including 3% of the overall total allocated to the city for administration of the program, and costs associated with handling the Minor Home Repair Program and the new program that's under consideration here, the First-Time Home Buyers Program. With that, I'm sure you may have some questions. I know staff did receive a few questions here and there, primarily on the First-Time Home Buyers Program. There were some questions about how that would operate in terms of how lenders would be brought into the program with Councilman Carter over the last month or so. Been working with essentially an ad hoc committee or task force of some lenders and bankers and realtors to look at some options, primarily framing it off of the City of Lee Summit Program. Theirs is very similar in terms of both their demographics, but also how much funding they've allocated to that program. So essentially utilizing that as a framework, much like we did with the Minor Home Repair Program as well. We also did look at City of Independence. They have, obviously, a lot larger sum of money that they're working with, and some different demographic issues, but we did look at that information as well. So with the input from that outside group, spearheaded by Councilman Carter, put together the information that's included in your packet after the draft annual action plan attachment for you this evening. So with that, I'll certainly stand for any questions, otherwise open it up for the public if they have any comments as well.
Any questions with Ms. Allen? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I did have a couple of questions on the First-Time Home Buyers Program. I called staff a little bit and discussed this yesterday as well. The application form, I think, has not been developed yet. I asked for a copy of it this morning, and they said it hadn't been completed yet.
That's correct.
But I guess there's some additional flow issues with ours that I'm trying to figure out. If we look at the federal First-Time Buyers Home Program, people that meet those guidelines, they actually get to participate.
Yes.
Okay? There's no other bureaucracy. There's nothing, you know, there's no preferred list that they have to go to, to do business. If in the state program, First-Time Home Buyers Program, anybody meeting the guidelines, they actually also receive the benefit. And they don't have to go check any preferred business list to see if it's okay to do business with them. But with the city, First-Time Home Buyers Program, people may meet the federal guidelines, but they can also be rejected if they pick a lending institution that may not be on the preferred business list. And I'm just wondering more about that. What is so interesting about the application process that any lending institution can't, wouldn't have the qualified staff to fill out those forms?
Sure. Essentially, it's a screening process for the city to, again, screen those lenders prior to entering into the program, so we can funnel potential applicants to, again, it's kind of preferred lenders, but essentially we're calling it participating lenders.
Okay. So if you need to screen the lenders, what is your criteria on screening the lenders? What can't somebody do that they wouldn't be allowed to do this?
Simply that they can operate financially under the guidelines, like you're mentioning, provided by the feds.
So you're saying that some lending institutions can't do that?
I'm not saying that they can or cannot. We haven't reached that point in terms of dissecting who would apply and who may not be eligible.
So the city has drafted a First-Time Home Buyers Program Memorandum of Understanding between lending institutions that would be on this preferred list, and our city administrator will sign it for the city. And then, one of the bottom bullet here, "Approval of Grant Must Be Given by City Administrator." Okay? So that's just a little reminder in here of who approves that. So any applicant that qualifies for the program under the federal guidelines, they would still have to do business with companies that have signed a memorandum of understanding-
Correct.
-with our city administrator.
Well, with the city.
With the city.
And, again, this is, the memorandum of understanding is, again, it's a screening process, but also assures the city that there's some safeguards, that they are following certain conditions. And we do have the memorandum of understanding. I do not have additional copies, but there are a whole host of conditions that, like I was saying, mimics what the federal requirements are. So essentially assures the city that we are entering into an agreement with a third party that is going to meet those federal guidelines.
Right. I think the interesting point is, is that these are a list of requirements that anybody would have to follow. I'm just trying to figure out where we have signed this for some businesses and not others.
Ms. Allen, let me defer to Councilman Carter, and let him address that, since this is something that he has spearheaded.
Well, I'd like to give it some context and give you an idea of what we're doing from the beginning, if I may, but to answer your question specifically, there are lending institutions in Blue Springs that are on the list for Lee Summit and Independence. This is not an exclusive club. Now, our goal would be to give preferential treatment to Blue Springs lenders, much as Lee Summit gives preference to Lee Summit lenders, and Independence gives preference to Independence lenders. It's all part of the Buy Blue Springs First Program.
Okay.
You have a-
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm trying to, once again, figure that out. So if somebody has a, they want to buy in Blue Springs, they may live in, they may have grown up here in Blue Springs.
Right.
Their brother may do business, may be at a lending institution, working in the state of Texas, okay, but, and may give them a good loan, but yet they come to the city of Blue Springs to try and qualify. They do qualify under the federal guidelines, but yet they don't have, their application would be rejected because our city administrator hasn't signed a memorandum of understanding with the company that they chose. That seems like a pretty arbitrary way of deciding who gets the money and who doesn't.
I believe the list in Independence, and Deanna McLean, who's here, could answer this question as well. It's a very long list of lenders, because they've done this program for some time, and we've copied liberally from their program.
If I may. If, we also have a Minor Home Repair Program with the same funds. If we were to go and use the same philosophy, some elderly lady could come in and wants to use it for minor home repair, actually repair some blight, comes into the city and actually has a project there, picks a contractor, best value, lowest bid, and comes into the city and says, you know, "I'd like to apply for this," submits the application, and gets turned down because that contractor doesn't have a memorandum of understanding with our city administrator. I just think that's pretty arbitrary, that we select certain businesses we can do business with, and then put them on our website to advertise them. I'm not saying that two wrongs make a right here. I mean, if the city of Independence and Lee Summit do it, that's their prerogative to do it. I don't know how the city gets in the middle of making those decisions for our citizens. If they meet the federal requirements, they meet the federal requirements. It seems pretty arbitrary that our city administrator gets to approve each grant, decide whose pocket the money actually goes to, and approve the businesses which get to conduct business in Blue Springs. I just don't see, that's the function of government.
Let me chime in on this, because I don't think it's the city administrator arbitrarily making the decision. It's a basic criteria that's being established to choose who you would do business with based on their ability to do it, number one, because they're CDVG funds. Ultimately, the city is responsible of those funds to the federal government. And we have to be held accountable, and if there is a problem with it, the buck's not going to stop with that person. The buck's going to stop with us at the city of Blue Springs.
And any applicant can, you know, you can put this on the application form, so that anybody signs up to this every time they do it. My issue is, is we're making a discriminatory process and filtering out people that meet the federal guidelines based on some arbitrary needs, you know, to pick us one business over another.
Well, this is a little different than repairing a broken window in a house for a Minor Home Repair Program. I mean, a mortgage is an extensive process, so there's a lot of red tape that's going to have to be gone through, and the lenders who've been involved in the process to this point are Blue Springs businesses who've stepped up to the plate and have helped in this process in putting this thing together.
Yes, and there, and just because somebody picks a lending institution that's not in the city of Blue Springs, you're going to say that they don't qualify?
There's a process that has to be gone through here. We're at the very beginnings of this process.
You've put it in written policy. You don't have the application form yet, but we already have the memorandum of understanding of who we're doing business with.
Right. And it's not difficult to get on that list.
But it is a list that you have to get on. And, okay, so, and the majority of lending institutions will not be on that list?
You know what? I don't think we're going to resolve this going back and forth. I think the decision's going to be made when you actually adopt the resolution tonight.
And if I may, I want to give this some context and background, because there may be people watching who have no idea what we've done here, and I'd like to start from the beginning and bring up the folks who have been working on this committee to answer questions.
They will be able to come up when we get to the public.
Okay, absolutely.
But if you want to go ahead and put some context to it prior to that, you can.
All right. When I campaigned for this office, there were two themes out there. "Pave my road" and "Do something about multifamily." And this will not do anything to completely eradicate the multifamily problem, if we have one in this community, but it will offer the people the chance to move from a rental situation into ownership. It will offer up to $3,000 in down payment or closing costs based on income guidelines. It also requires an educational course be taken, so that they know what homeownership's all about. In Independence, one of the communities we borrowed from, this educational component has reduced foreclosures in their First-Time Home Buyer Program to 1%. This makes Blue Springs proactive in trying to retain these people. And then there's a cascade effect that happens as well. The starter home is sold to someone, and the starter owner is moving to a bigger home, hopefully in Blue Springs to keep their kids in the Blue Springs School District, will stay here. And then people selling larger homes to downsize will now have buyers for their homes as well, and it will also have the effect of increasing property values. Mike Peterman from the city put in a lot of effort and work into this program. He could not be here tonight, but Mr. Allen is up to speed on it, and he can answer questions, but Mr. Peterman would be the point person. Deanna McLean and Dwayne Duhon are here tonight. They helped the plan from the mortgage side, and will also oversee that educational component that I've talked about. Bonnie Hutchcroft is here tonight. She and Louane Holyfield offered their expertise on the real estate side. Our initial pilot program would help 13 families. We'd like to see that. 25 per year, about half of what Independence does. And unlike the Minor Home Repair Program, which has been underutilized, this would use all of the money, and we wouldn't have to send it back to Washington, DC. Again, these are community development block grants, so we're not talking about budget money. I know that times are tight right now. I've gotten a lot of questions about that. These are community development block grants, and if you're going to develop a community, there's no better way, in my view, than moving people from renters into full-blown property-owning citizens. And then we have some folks who are here tonight, who were a part of the process, who can answer questions you have about process. I mean, I saw Deanna McLean shaking her head when you were going through the whole mortgage company issue, so I'm sure she'll have more details on that than I will.
Sure.
Any other comments?
Yep. Your Honor?
Yes.
There's certainly good merits to the First-Time Home Buyers Program. That's not the issue that I'm bringing up. The issue is process. The issue is who gets to decide, you know, how federal money is going to be given out, and a practice of being able to pick, our city administrator being able to pick one business over another, maybe signing a memorandum of understanding with some, but not others. It's an exclusionary, it's a club that I don't understand the structure of. It's not, it's not-
To let the city administrator off the hook, Mike Peterman would be the point person and the person who would coordinate the program.
And so that's why it says "Approval of Grant Must Be Given by the City Administrator."
If I may, Your Honor, that's just standard paperwork procedures with a lot of these grant funds. And, again, staff picks the city administrator simply because of that standard process, but it certainly could be the mayor, it could be someone else that the council would like to select, to sign off on those. But getting back to page two of this, the whole program information, it talks about application approval procedure, and hopefully it's fairly straightforward. I apologize if it's a little bit confusing in terms of talking about the buyer and what their responsibilities are, and then the lender as well. As Councilman Fowler mentioned, yeah, each lender would be required to enter into that memorandum of understanding, but each and every, if each and every applicant comes forward with a different lender, each of those lenders can enter into one of those memorandums, understanding, and that, we give a kind of a timeframe. It's a 10, minimum 10 business days to go through that paperwork. So the point being, this would, if you kind of pre-screen or pre-approve some of these lenders, it would speed up that process, but it does not exclude anybody from entering into that MOU with the city to be an approved lender. So it doesn't specifically exclude that, but it does allow for pre-screened lenders to be available for applicants.
And I respect that, but it's an extra layer of bureaucracy that doesn't need to be there. Big Brother doesn't have to get involved like this.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Allen.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Lowry?
Just to reiterate that these are grant funds that are being used. They're not out of budget and so forth.
Right. Hundred percent, yes.
And as with any other grant, as you indicated, Mayor, the city is responsible for those. So as a matter of fiscal responsibility, it would certainly make sense that we have an appropriate process to go through and it be signed off by the accountable person.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience who'd like to complain? To be sworn in, please.
Please, Ms. Allen, if you solemnly swear or refer to testimony, you will give this matter of truth. Please state your name and address. Steve McLean, Wounded Wolf Creek, Northwest Chapel Street, Missouri.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Councilman Fowler stated that the state of Missouri does not have a list of approved lenders for their MHDC program. They do. If you go to their website, you have to be an approved lender. I can't do those loans. I'm not an approved lender for that program. So that's normal. One of the reasons that's normal is because these programs have very specific criteria. When I applied to be on the list for Independence, I went to a class. I had to learn how to do their program. It's not just, here it is, anybody can do it, and there's no criteria. It's very specific.
Okay. Your Honor?
Yes.
That's where I started out with staff and asked for those specific things. What is so unique about ours? I looked at the application, that their draft form and the copy of Lee Summit. I didn't see anything on there that was so technically challenging that it would have taken me more than 15 minutes to do the whole form.
It's not that it's so technically challenged.
And I also don't see the documentation in this memorandum of understanding that talks about anything that's unique.
It's knowing how to qualify the borrower, making sure you're doing it correctly, and that you're not wasting city staff's time with people that don't qualify for the program. That's part of what we do.
And couldn't that be put on the application form itself?
Not really.
Why couldn't it?
Because everybody calculates their income a little differently, and we do it the accurate way, as a lender.
And you can, and we can ask you to verify that on a signature on the application form, that the lending institution followed these set of guidelines that the city prescribes to?
There's reasons that we go through the process, Councilman Fowler, and that's why. It's not just, everybody thinks it's just easy, fill out a form, but it's just not. The package for Independence, the training I went through to be in a part of their program was two hours long. There's a reason for that.
And what is our training program?
I don't know yet. We're not there yet.
It's being developed, isn't it?
Yeah. We're not done that, you know?
So we've already got the memorandum of understanding?
But there is a reason, there is a reason why there's an approval process. And I just wanted to clarify that the state of Missouri has it, so does the federal government. There are federal programs that not all lenders can do.
And I'm asking for the city of Blue Springs. What is that technical criteria? What is that reason, specifically?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, you're saying there's some technical reason we have to enter into memorandum of understandings with businesses. What is it?
Shouldn't they be approved? Shouldn't you know that they have the knowledge to do the program?
If they're in business, and they are going to sign that they have reviewed all the criteria, and they're meeting our criteria on the application form, I think that's doing business. You want me to distrust every business out there? I'm looking at saying, look, they're signing it, they're getting a notarized, that they've done their due diligence.
And then they're fine. Then they're approved. But they have to do that part.
There's nothing in here that shows me that the company that signs up and signs this memorandum of understanding has done anything different.
I don't know, because I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I think we can continue to debate this issue. And, again, I think the key to it is, is ultimately, the city is responsible. I wish we could be trusting, but we can't trust everybody. There's a lot, there are people out there that you can look at, and you think they're the most truthful person in the world, and they could be fraudulent. So, I mean, we have to do our due diligence, I think, as a city, to make sure that we dot all the i's, cross all the t's, and make sure that we have our fiduciary duties up to speed when we do these things, so.
Yeah. Just wanted to give up my two cents in.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? I'm about to go to opposition, too. You better hurry.
If you solemnly swear of the testimony, you will give this matter of truth.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Dwayne Duhon, 3428 Northwest Chapman Court, Blue Springs.
I guess I would like to address Councilman Fowler. Accountability is really the bottom line. The city is accountable for the money as it's dispersed from these block grants, and this approval process, what it does is gives you control over who is distributing it at the lending side. Right now, the lending institute, the lending industry as a whole in the state of Missouri is going through a licensing process. We have become so sophisticated that they're weeding out all these people, but there are still some people out there that don't do business in an ethical way. And with you being accountable for these funds, you need to know who you're dealing with. You need to have some way to say, hey, we don't want to do business with you anymore because you didn't do it right. That's really what the approval process is about, is accountability, as to who's handling these funds and handling the customers on the other end, and making sure that they're being taken care of properly. That's my comment. It's a great program, bridges the gap, gets renters into homeowners. I don't think there's any doubt that it's a good program, but the administrative part of it, when you start talking about giving out money like that, that's free, fraud comes into play, and the city itself, as a citizen, they need to know that they're accountable for it and how to control it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other people that'd like to speak in support of? In opposition to? In opposition to?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, in opposition to, I do have an email from a constituent in District 1, preferred not to be speaking here tonight. I want to communicate that.
Okay.
I urge you to review the proposed CDVG budget for the August 4th council meeting, and amend the proposed budget to the funds proposed for the First-Time Home Buyers instead for city infrastructure. This change would improve the older areas of the city rather than just 13 lucky people. This change is urged for the following reasons. Uses tax dollars to broadly benefit many residents by upgrading the older area of the city rather than a few. In this economic environment with city budget stress and infrastructure needs, how do you justify adding a social welfare program? Upgrading infrastructure and repairing homes improves the appearance of older areas, resulting in increased property values and property taxes, a benefit to all residents. And in my opinion, it says we have enough new social programs from the federal government without the city adding new programs.
Point of order, Your Honor?
Yes.
Can we take an anonymous letter in terms of testimony for a public hearing?
I will. Ask our city attorney.
It's okay for somebody to read it in. It just gets whatever weight anybody thinks it gets, if it's anonymous.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else? Councilman Edmondson?
We can either do it now, or you can close the hearing, and I can do it on comments. It doesn't matter either way.
Why don't we go ahead and close it, and then we can have your discussion?
That's fine.
Seeing nobody else to come before us to testify, I want to close this public hearing. Now we have a resolution, number 75-2010. Anyone like to introduce the resolution?
May I introduce it, Your Honor?
Okay. It doesn't need to be read? Okay. So is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, if I may, and Councilman Fowler, it doesn't necessarily pertain to this, but you brought it up as far as approved vendor, or approved source, or approved business. The state and the federal require, for example, in my business, require me to be an approved vendor. I have to fill out certain paperwork to show that I'm, you know, that I pay my taxes. I have a state ID number. I have a federal tax ID number. That's part of the approved vendor process. I am pretty sure that happens in your place of business. At one time, I know I did have to do that, under one of the managements that were there. Currently, I'm on an approved- Currently, I'm on an approved vendor list, for example, the school district. They want you to have an approved vendor list. By that, you're already in the system. You have to be registered in the system so they can automatically cut checks, do things like that. It's, it's just a, a process of that. The state does it. They even hold seminars that bring you in and you introduce yourself to different agencies within the federal government and the state government, and they tell you the proper way to go about doing that. So it's not uncommon from a business side of it, and that's kind of what I'm trying to go at on this, is from a business side of it, that if you want to be involved in these programs, you go in and apply for it, you put in the paperwork, and again, fill in the proper, proper lines of what information they need for that, and then, then you're able to do that. Then you can be put on a list of these people that filled out and, and done that. Not to say that, that this program is, is something different or whatever. I'm just saying it's, it's common from a business standpoint that we have to apply and, and do the paperwork to be put on an approved list.
Any other comments? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, your honor. There are certainly licensing requirements for you to do business, but any consumer that comes up to your door, they don't have to, you know, they trust that you have done your due diligence, and, and if it requires a city permit, that you've got that to do business in the city of Blue Springs. There's licensing instructions, everything like that. The issue is, is when a citizen wants to qualify for a program, and they come in and they say, well, my application's been rejected because my company didn't already preregister with the city of Blue Springs, but yet I hear, I hear also that it's very easy. All you got to do is send in a request and you're qualified. I, I can't understand what that criteria is, and it's very arbitrary looking for something specific, so.
Any other comments? See? Councilman?
I just, I guess to address Councilman Fowler as well, I, I just am trying to comprehend the issue here because if it, if it comes down to having an approved vendor list or having an approved lender list to do business and to be a part of the program, that I don't have a problem with. If it comes down to what is the criteria to be on that approved vendor list, I also have questions and concerns about what that criteria is. I, I would also like to see specifics. The program overall, I, I'm supportive of, and I think it's good to use these funds to see how successful it is, especially this year, and so it'd be something I'd support. But I am interested to see what the criteria is going to be for the lenders that are going to be on the list. So I, I just would eventually like to see that as well. I would be concerned about that process.
And I'm sure those things will be provided.
Absolutely.
Those things are going to be provided. Councilman Fowler?
Your honor, I just happen to have four responses to the four points from that anonymous letter that Councilman Fowler read. So if I can share those with the council. Number one, several of our adjacent communities have similar programs. We've already discussed that tonight. Councilman Carter has shared that with us. Blue Springs needs to be as attractive as possible for new homeowners. Number one. Number two, nothing says the qualified home buyer in this program has to purchase in a newer subdivision. They can buy a house in the older part of town, too. Number three, this is not a social welfare program. I'm certain there's much more to qualifying for the $3,000 than merely standing in line and filling out a form. And number four, the cycle of selling and buying a house benefits lots of people, not just the new homeowner, the previous homeowner, the bank, or the real estate agent. Let's not forget the positive impact it has on our neighborhoods, our schools, our local stores and restaurants, et cetera. In other words, there are more than 13 lucky people involved. Those were my comments.
Thank you, councilman. No other comments? We will roll call this one.
Okay. Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Emerson?
Aye.
Councilman Berman?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous, then.
Okay, adopted. It brings us to merril announcements. The reason we are meeting this Wednesday is because Monday night, there was a, there was a fundraiser for the wall that heals that's coming to town September 30th to October 3rd. Councilman Carter was able to put that together. I was really impressed as I came to the facility and the parking lot was full. Was even more impressed as I got inside and saw the number of people there. And true to my word, at the last council meeting, I cowboyed up.
Yes, you did.
Got a good time. That was Monday night. Last night was National Night Out on Crime, and was it hot? Yes, it was. But we still did it. People showed up. I think it was informative. I think it shows that Blue Springs is committed to weed out crime as best we can. The more people we have in tune to what criminals do, I want them to understand in Blue Springs, we might have some, but we're not going to tolerate it. It won't just be the police running you out. There's going to be citizens running you out of town, or they're going to be reporting you to the police so we can run you out of town. So my word to criminals, don't stop in Blue Springs. You keep on stepping.
Your honor?
Because we won't put up with it.
If I may, while you're on that subject, I, I did say something to Chief McCoy, and I, I would like to go on, at least with the public, let them know that, that I think his department and his officers went above and beyond the call of duty out there trying to make all the people that came feeling comfortable, welcome, provided water, provided food. You got, I like to say, your crew went way above and beyond the call of duty on that. And, and from my standpoint and from a citizen's standpoint, thank you very much. And also would like to thank Councilman Carter for all, all the effort he did, both for the wall to heal, and also he was out there in that heat trying to get those people up and doing some things.
I'm going for employee of the month.
Duly noted, councilman. And as I indicated last night, Councilman Carter was the emcee Monday night. He was the emcee last night, but tonight, I'm the emcee. That brings me to thoughts to ponder. Tonight's thoughts to ponder comes from Councilman Bierman. And other councilmen, feel free to share your thoughts with me, and I will put them on. Fault finding is dreadfully catching. One dog will set a whole kennel howling. And this is from Charles Spurgeon. Duly noted. Visitors. I don't have any visitors appearance forms, so I assume we do not have anyone here to speak to the council tonight. So that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All who know same sign, we adjourn.